We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
On a generation.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any oppositions? Okay. Everyone received the meeting minutes of September ninth. We have a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I'm in September.
Did we figure out if you know the second was on the adjournment or I can just.
You don't need a second one in the journey.
I said, had a question mark and now I'm just running.
Yeah, we don't need a second adjournment. Second.
A second.
All in favor? Any objections? Any additions or corrections other than we do not need a second for adjournment?
I've been made the motion to, but I didn't hear. Thank you, Caitlin.
And there's Julie. She's really not that late.
I'm on four minutes.
Okay. Board President Report, that's me. Where did I put my notes? Alright, so. Update on the job advertisement for the permanent executive director. Search is actually actively progressing. We have received applications. Were accepted through October ten, which was Friday. We received a total of twelve applications and after review of those applications, four candidates have been selected to move forward to the interview stage. So the remaining applicants were sent thank you emails for applying. And our interviews will be scheduled for October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And they'll be conducted virtually since three of the four are not local. And Lisa McKennie will be local and we'll probably have that one in person. I extended the invitation to the county administrator and county commissioners to serve on the interview committee. The county administrator has declined. He is not in. For those two days. And I have not heard back from any county commissioners, so I will let everyone know if that comes to fruition since yesterday was a holiday, we'll see. Then after the interviews are conducted, the committee will recommend a final candidate to the full board because not all of us will be participating in that interview process. And we will approve the next executive director and that announcement will be scheduled for November, November fourteenth and that timeline allows us for second interviews if we deem necessary. Clarification on board representation. There were some questions raised regarding representation on the board of library trustees. First and foremost, process has to comply with the annotated code of Maryland for county public libraries. And that according to code, which is education division, let's see, four, five, four. I had to do my Roman numerals, sorry. Four, other education provisions, title twenty-three, library subtitle four, county public libraries. The requirements for board composition are as follows. Section A one, each board of library trustees consists of seven members appointed by the county governing body from nominees submitted by the board of library trustees. Section B, members of the board shall be representative of the area the library serves and residents of the county that the library serves. Because this language is somewhat vague and open to interpretation, I had conversations with our state librarian confirming that representation by specific library location was not explicitly required under, under the annotated code. However, our county commissioners expressed a preference for geographical diversity across the library locations. So in response to that preference, the board used our scoring rubric, which we've discussed previously for all the fifty-eight applicants, which included a location as one of the several evaluation criteria. One of several evaluation criteria and that process led to the top eighteen candidates which were selected for interviews. And, but ultimately, our goal as the board of trustees was to identify and recommend the most qualified candidates who can represent the best interests of all libraries across Allegheny County. So those recommendations were then forwarded to the county commissioners commissioners for their final approval. So I just wanted to make that clear as to the annotated code, we had to go by that and seems to be a little vague, but we did our best and I feel that we chose very qualified candidates. Was a very long process, but it was well worked. Okay. Interim Executive Director Report. Lisa?
I have three main areas to update the board about this evening. The communications continue within the organization as far as continuing around to speak to branch staff and department visits and library administrators. So in the previous month in September, I visited South Pomerol, George's Creek, Washington Street, the programming department and LaVell Library staff. And I have a notebook full of notes from these visits. Things that need to be attended to as far as the buildings are concerned, ideas that the branch staff have. So all of that is ongoing and ultimately what I'll be doing is compiling all of this into a document that I will share to you. Probably at the next board meeting, I'll probably have completed all of those visits. But there's a lot packed in there to share with you. In addition to communications, I've been continuing to meet with state librarian Morgan Miller monthly. She's been very supportive and has been able to provide a lot of information. And I attended the Friends of Western Port Library meeting also this past month. Next, I wanted to update you on Western Port Libraries. There's a lot that's been happening with Western Port. First of all, we have signed a lease to rent one hundred and twenty-one Main Street as a temporary location since the old Reeves Clinic. And that's going to be able to provide library service to the public while things are being worked on related to sixty-six Main Street. I was hoping that we could get a motion from the board to approve the lease just officially. But we are continuing to work on the space. I met with the administrative team and Perfect Reflections. We all looked over the space together. We have some cleaning and painting work that we're doing. Installing shelving and getting the technology set up. I am I plan to approach the Save the Western Port Library to cover the expenses related to the technology.
I probably, I don't comment about that.
Okay. Trish Morgan had mentioned to me several months back in the summer that that was an area that Save the Western Port was interested in helping to fund. So I'll be interested to talk with you Regina, but I think generally we were looking at making the purchases of what's going to be required to run the circulation system and you know barcode scanners, printers, all that sort of thing. We're going to make those purchases. And then what I was thinking was I would compile that list together and then give that to you.
Yeah, we're waiting for that list. Can I, can I just say one thing? Real quickly, we've been closed for five months. So my counting mind, we have five months of expenditure that have not been used. I know that we have some utilities and we, you know, there are some expenses, but we still haven't had to do end repairs and, you know, of course, any whatever. And so where is that five months of income that would have been allocated for Western Port?
It's still in, in the bank and ultimately. Yeah, I think ultimately what will happen is that whenever we move forward with what's happening next, we're going to have a lot of additional expenses above the typical of what we would normally have in a, in a year when, when the building wasn't flooded. So I think that although, I mean, we still pay the electric bill.
Right.
You know, we're, we're still paying all of those, those bills, but.
We have no problem. We, we really don't have any problem funding that.
Right.
But the only thing I had was that five months, that five months is going to go to collections for our library and do what, when you have to do this allocated to us.
Sure, and, and just to be clear, we've never stopped buying collections for Western Port, ever the entire. So, you know, none of that has. Well, what I would say is we have not reallocated those funds to the other fund ranges, if that's what you need to hear.
Yes, I think. And that's what I was going to, you know, that's okay.
Okay. So as far as the rest, we are. The news about one twenty-one Main Street was sent out with a press release by Ashley and social media posts. And the feedback from the public has overall been very positive about the temporary location. We are also continuing to work on the town hall opportunity for the Western Port community that's taking place on October the twenty-second. I don't know if the board can meet with us at the Bruce Outreach Center that evening. We have a nice space, we're going to use the auditorium at the Bruce Outreach Center. And we invited the Friends of Western Port Library and Save the Western Port Library members to a special session on the sixth of October. Several meetings with the administrators to create a memoir to go out to the public related to the town hall and one twenty-one Main Street, the temporary location. And we've also created print and online surveys for those who can't attend in person. So in your meeting packet, you will find there are copies of the survey. And again, this is available for people to complete online and in print. So you'll have a copy of that in there as well as the card that is going out of the mailer to everyone in the Western Port service area. So as you can see, Ashley and Renee in our marketing outreach department created this. The one side is about the town hall and the other side is about the one twenty-one Main Street. So this will go to the residents in the Western Port service area.
Which is great. About twenty-five hundred households?
Yeah, and, and that's for our, our town hall is because we're inviting the community. And the community, it will, will have nothing to say. Community is going to tell us what they want to say in our library and that's what, that's what this is for.
Right, yeah. Jason got the wifi working at the library, which helped the pop-up libraries to be able to check out materials. And we are, we also worked on things like the database cleanup of date of the damaged collection items that were involved in the flood. And so then the last thing with Western Port that I wanted to talk about was I do meet with Public Works this week to talk about what they recommend as the next steps related to that. If you remember the foundation issue in the front of the building. I believe that they are going to be giving us their assessment of what they think needs to happen to remediate, remediate all of that. So a lot's happening with Western Port. And then the last thing on my list to talk to you about.
Can we, can we?
Oh, yes.
Back up just a minute. About the things that are going on with the actual flooding. One, the bill that you received from the cleaning crew.
Yes.
Or whatever the title was and all of the expenses that we was previous to the cleaning bill was another invoice that came in that we were asking. Can't get the guys name.
Is that, is that, is that covered under insurance or?
Well, that's, that's where we're concerned is our insurance only covers so much. And the the cleaning bill came in.
Hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Hundred and thirty-one, yes.
I should have blamed it.
And then the estimate for, can't remember, I'm sorry, I'm like drawing a blank. What did we send to Nick to, to check out?
That was the, we actually did ask him to take another look at the cleaning costs because that came in above what the insurance claim I think thought that they were going to come in under. So.
I couldn't remember if it was for cleaning or if it was for items that we thought were, I can't remember.
No, it was definitely the cleaning. And so where all that stands at this moment is that he is, the insurance adjuster is speaking with the company that did the cleanup to get some additional information from them about why the cost came in higher than what the insurance company anticipated. So I think that the next steps with that are either the insurance adjuster is going to be able to negotiate the cost of the invoice down so that the company that did the cleaning would charge us less. Or the insurance company would perhaps look at giving us more, we still had some room in the building side of our insurance claim. So there will be hopefully a possibility that the insurance company will give us additional funds to help pay for these additional unexpected costs. But it is a great concern to me because this will eat into a large chunk of the insurance claim that we received back for the libraries. So if we are required to pay this amount of money, I think that the, the problem with that is then what amount of money is left to put the building back together again? So they did a fa, they did a fabulous job with the cleanup, that cannot be denied. It is, you know, top job, but there has to be some exploration, I think, on the insurance side and also you know, on our side to figure out what we're going to do next.
Is there any fine print that might have been missed when it was arranged?
Not that I have found.
How much was it elevated using, compared to what we thought it was?
I found some other estimates that John had gotten from a couple of other competitors and they were coming in more like at the sixty thousand dollar amount. So it's significantly higher.
That is, that's double.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's concerning.
And I, this is on my list to also talk to the county about to see if they have any other recommendations for how we might want to deal with the situation. But it was, it was a shock. I, I said, when I looked at that, I have palpitations because it was.
Yeah, we, none of us were there for the negotiation of, of when the different cleaning crews came in to give their, their estimates or John was there for that. And we also got another invoice from Kenny's, Kenny's Customs for work that he did that John approved for the Western Port Library for the circulation desk. And it was a little alarming to Lisa and I. And Lisa did a great job in saying, okay, we will pay this, but we will not be using you any, any longer.
When Lisa submitted that estimate, did we sign off and give her the range on the panel or?
I have not been able to find a document that agreed to, I can find a document where John as the library signed to agree to those services, but I can't find anything that had a cost associated with it. So I, I, I don't.
That was never discussed, I don't.
Such a big time change.
Yeah.
Like we don't. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not able to find a document where we have signed an estimate that it would cost us much money.
I mean, that, that just eats into everything that.
Yeah, I mean, it's. That's why I wanted it brought up.
We have, we have pledges of two seventy, but our cash is fifty-three, something like that. So, you know, that's one thing, I mean, we just don't want, we're, we'll continue to fund rate. But we want to do something next, like if you give us through computers and we want to put it through. Things like that, that's what we had hoped for.
But that's, I wanted that to be out so that everyone understands that the costs for getting it back up, it's not going to happen like that. And that's, that's why, you know, the temporary location is going to give us some time to do a little bit of research and and due diligence and making sure that the, the money is spent appropriately.
We absolutely cannot move forward unless we have money in hand to cover the entirety of the costs associated. We, we, we can't take the risk, we have to make sure we have money in hand.
Absolutely.
So all of this needs to be resolved.
Yes, and it takes, I mean, our school is a good example. We just, the, the boiler just got fixed, we just got heat last week. The elevator got fixed and now it's being inspected. And now the bids are going out for the, for downstairs. Yes, they, I'm sure spent a small fortune cleaning it up, but it just all takes so long.
And one of the things I, I, I know I can't speak for anything prior to my, to my tenure, but everything is being very, done very well and forthright so that everyone understands what's happening. Because I don't think that that's always been the case. I think some things have been done, you know, just with any renovation of anything. Decisions have been made and, and not questioned. And Lisa's doing a great job of, of making sure that.
Transparence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That everything is above board and, and that we're, the library is not paying more than they should.
We appreciate it. We, and we appreciate the temp location because that's what we, as long as they can go to the library and have a safe place, have wifi.
What, what is the status of the cleanup? Like what, did they remove drywall? What is the building's status right now?
Yes, and, and if the board, you know, if you would want to come and visit with me one day, I'd be happy to kind of tour you through. But when you go into the library, they've removed the drywall and the entire building up, up to about a four foot. So the wires are kind of hanging there. All flooring has been taken up. It's really a shell of the building. And then the, the big question mark is when you go to the front of the building, if you follow the cinder blocks across the front of the building, you will see that it, you know, it should be like a straight line going across, but you can see where it's, it's sunk on the one side of the slab in the front and it actually kind of goes downward. And then on the other side, kind of around where the, the wall between the adult section and the meeting room, it actually is heated up a little bit. So you can see that, you know, that it's kind of up a little bit on the one side of the meeting room and it, and it kind of sinks down as you go across. So I think that the question is, and oh, and I spoke to someone from Perfect Reflections who was there right after the flooding had taken place and she told me that you can see where the foundation had a big blank hole underneath of it. So there was definitely a void under there at some point. So I think that when we went back for the meeting on the sixth, Ashley had been there right after the flood had taken place and you actually thought that it had sunk a little further from when you were there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Molly, if you, if you want to kind of tour through and see what it looks like, I'd be happy to meet you there someday.
I have pictures. I was like, I know there's pictures somewhere. Just curious, what, what's the definition of the cleanup? We're being charged.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, lady, all of the furniture, all of the books that were completely destroyed, so all the contents, they, they removed all of that. So it was, you know, and, and all the.
A lot of sludge, yeah.
Just the mud and all that was on top with everything was terrible. We also received what is not good news from our primary book vendor since, since two thousand seven, has been Baker and Taylor.
Can I, can, can we first get a motion from the board to approve the lease of the temporary location of Western Port?
I'll make a motion and accept that.
We have a second?
I'll send it.
All in favor? Any oppositions?
What's the rally for?
We're paying five hundred dollars a month.
Any abstentions? Okay. Motion, there you go. Sorry, go ahead. I didn't, I didn't want to get all, you're right.
So Baker and Taylor has been our book vendor since two thousand seven.
I feel so sad.
And it's a two-year-old company.
It's a tour.
There was a merger with another company that fell through and then they just recently announced that they are going to close. So the materials department and I have been scrambling to send reports of all the pending orders that they have submitted. They spent hours and hours picking out materials for the library. So we're trying to capture all of that so that when we, we're moving over to a new book vendor, we can resubmit those orders. And all of their hard work is, is being preserved, but it's going to change a lot of our workflows. And there's going to be a lot of work to transition over to the next vendor that we're going to be using. So that was unfortunate in the midst of everything else that we've, we've got that going on, so. Alright, I think that's everything for my my report. Are we ready to move on to the financials?
Yep, financials.
September. On the income side, the library received a whopping nineteen thousand fifty-six dollars in gifts and memorials. That includes two thousand dollars from the Friends of the LaVell Library, one thousand dollars from the Friends of George's Creek Library, several donations for Western Port Flood Recovery, including sizable gifts from the Del Fest Foundation, Danielle Niles and an anonymous donation. The total income for fines and fees, copier and printing was thirteen hundred forty-five dollars and seventeen cents for the month. Meaning on to expenses in sixty-one zero zero five, the audit, there were eighty-seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-four cents in expenses for the annual audit. That included the completion of the GASPY seventy-five actuarial report, which was completed by Steve, as Lexi got to to, to deal with that report. That is the GASPY is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and that involves those other post-employment benefits for state and local government. So that is required in order for us to complete our audit each year for, that's a piece of it. And sixty-one zero one three, staff recruitment, eight hundred and ten dollars and fifty-four cents was spent for job advertisements for the executive director position at the library. And sixty-four zero zero one, electric costs, fifty-one thirty-five twenty-four was spent for all branches for the month for the electric bills. We spent seventy-three hundred and eighty dollars in collections, that's sixty-eight thousand. And gifts and memorials, so those are sixty-eight five oh one and sixty-eight five oh two. We spent thirty-nine hundred ten dollars for collections. And those are all using the funds that were given to us by donors. And in programming, twenty-four fifty included the expenses for summer reading program and events and gift card prizes from winners. We could not do our summer programs without the donations that we receive from the public. So we are thankful for those. And I think that that's all the highlights that I have pulled out for September unless there are any questions about the finances.
Can I have a give a copy?
But we don't typically give a copy to the public, financial report.
Damn it.
Can we get a motion to approve? Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
It's a lot of money to run a library system.
Okay, policy updates?
Alright, now four policies for the board to review standing. The first one in the pocket is the privacy policy. The privacy policy is one that was required to be posted on our website whenever the text notification system that we use was switched over to a new provider this past summer. That service is called Message B and it was implemented regionally in Allegheny area and Washington County libraries. And the reason for the change was that the previous service that we used was the, the format of the SMS messages was no longer supported by the cell phone carrier. So the company that we went with, they required us to post a privacy policy, which we, which we did. There's a copy of that in front of you. I know Molly, you had sent a suggestion for a change in the confidentiality section, just some rewording there at the end.
Yep.
So I think that the way that it stands, this would be in confidentiality of library records. We would be looking at page three. There's a note after the, the exceptions section, there's a note that currently states patrons may opt in to retain their checkout history in the library's catalog database. By default, the library does not retain that information. Molly's suggestion was that we change the wording there to say, please note, patrons may choose to retain their checkout history in the library's catalog and patron database. If enabled, this information may be subject to subpoena. By default, the library does not store checkout history.
We're just be adding a little bit more language there to clarify.
I can give some more suggestions.
Hopefully a lot clearer. We're not very lit, could you put?
No, it's fine, it's fine. So that will be one edit that would have been made to the draft of the document that was sent to you. And we would invite you if there are any other edits or feedback that you have for the policy. So I guess we would be looking at the possibility of making a motion to approve this policy, which would include the change that Molly suggested.
Correct.
Well, I can design, literally your policy with the change would be added. Well, I can design, literally, your policy with the changes would be added.
Second?
All second.
All, all in favor? Any opposed? Any suspensions? Personal time leave?
Personal time leave adds a personal day for birthday for employees as a benefit, returning a perk that was once available to staff in years past. The changes that we will be looking at is the allocation will be twenty-eight, one, twenty-eight hours of personal time instead of twenty-one hours of personal time, and adding some verbiage to the policy that, um, is in the first paragraph. Personal time leave is granted so that the employee can celebrate their birthday and to compensate for holidays where the library system is open and staff may be required to work. Those would be the changes.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, contaminated materials and library account suspension.
All right. Um, this actually changes the title. Um, it is now called Contaminated Materials and Library Account Suspension Policy. Formerly Suspension of Privileges for Health and Safety Reasons. That was the previous policy's title. Uh, this policy was last approved in August of twenty twenty. We were looking at a couple of goals related to changing the policy. The first is to create a document that's easier to interpret and use when expediency is required. Uh, it inserts links to letter templates and incident report forms right within the documents. Since these are Google Docs, people, you know, at their fingertips can link right to the documents that they will need to, um, get to in these situations. And it's also reformatted to clearly define in separate sections the responsibilities by position. So there's a section for the service leader, there's a section for the coordinator, a section for the executive director. Um, where the board was all grouped together, so some of these are, um, some of these changes are, are just in massaging, you know, the, the text a little bit. I'm not major change it really, uh, just making it a little bit more easy to use.
Does it happen a lot? I believe there only had the bag of hook once. Maybe there were others that I missed, but there was one in particular. Does it happen a lot?
Times a year, I would say. Yes, and once is too much.
Once is too much, I agree. Once is too much when.
Yeah, but we, um, you know, you, you probably read in the policy, we have some, you know, some tools that staff have as far as bagging them, getting them out of the branch as quickly as possible, and when that kind of thing happens, so. So that is, that kind of is an overview of what those changes are. Shay actually, uh, took the lead as far as taking over this document and, and making the changes, so, uh, Shay, do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, I did notice there is one section, I believe, on, um, the third page where it says tutorial on locking book drops. Um, I will be adding to those things, um, but it looks like, um, I was still working on that with the service leaders, um, because some of them, we can actually lock the book drop from the outside. So there is, um, I'm not sure if you guys saw, but there was a, a pretty bad infestation down in South Cumberland, and we did have some, um, uh, uh, an issue with the patron there. So some of that, um, prompted this. But we can actually, um, on some of the locations, block the book drops from the outside, so that's another option. Or, um, you know, just have even physically block it off if there is a really bad, um, outbreak. Um, and then the only other thing, we just added some general, um, some general tips for staff on the last page. So just sort of, um, information and education to empower them and make them feel a little, a little more comfortable as much as they can when dealing with these, um, unfortunate and uncomfortable situations, so.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, sure.
Any discussions? Okay, we have a motion to approve the contaminated materials and library account suspension policy with the additions that Shay has to make with links. Second?
All second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next, community room use policy.
Yes, and, uh, Ashley took the lead on this one. The copy that you have highlights the areas, I believe, that were added or changed. So, um, Ashley, do you wanna provide, um, any kind of like a brief overview?
Yeah, I can give just kind of an explanation. Um, it had been a while, I believe, since the community room use policy had been updated, at least in terms of, um, content. Uh, I just kind of reorganized it in a way that, like, made it flow a little bit better. Um, and then the highlighted parts, as Lisa mentioned, are the things that were added or changed, mainly just added. Um, and it was, uh, really centered around how busy the meeting rooms have become, especially La Velle. Um, so, um, just clarifying, whenever, um, someone makes an online reservation, um, they can't make it an hour before they come in, you know, and expect room to be ready and, um, set up and not in use already. So the staff have to have at least a day's notice to be able to approve that. Um, so that adds, uh, that in here, um, as well as some other walk-in or no-show, um, kind of thing. So like they morphed it, um, if they're late, you know, thirty minutes from now. So, and then also, um, adds if anyone does use the meeting room, um, and, uh, makes any publicity, um, that they are having an event or, um, would not have the library, they have to clarify that it is not a library, um, sponsored or endorsed event. It is, um, but it just happened to the library.
Been a long time since it was, um.
Yeah, getting done two thousand one, if I'm not mistaken, two thousand one.
We haven't revised it since. It's about time. Any discussion? Hey, can we have a motion to approve the community room use policy?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Library administrators' update, marketing, marketing and outreach, including statistics. Uh, everything seems like a tongue twister.
And I recorded a radio interview this morning and was getting my words all fumbled up. This must be that extra day that we had. So, um, uh, statistics, as promised, uh, we'll review the August and September statistics to get us caught up. Um, you all should have those in your packet here. Um, the big story, despite, uh, the limited pop-up services, the Westernport branch, circulation is significantly up compared to last August and September. You'll see, uh, in August, we're up twenty-three percent over last year, and September twenty-seven percent over last year. And as we had seen the last few months, seeing an increase in circulation, which we've been talking about. So program attendance, uh, has also increased twenty-eight percent in August and forty percent in September, um, which is just incredible. Um, we saw really strong participation in the Rock and Roll Paving Zoos. And, um, they actually held one during Character Days, the Washington Street Library, so that brought a lot more people in, uh, to that branch uh, for that special event. So we're happy to see, um, those, uh, indicators increase. Um, I did want to note, I apologize, on the backside of those summaries, um, the, all the great photos and, uh, great patients that we see engaging and participating in programs. Um, I neglected to update the descriptions. I'll update those and get them, um, printed file and do this stuff. So, um, those do not match up, but, um, the photos are, uh, taken over the last couple of months of, um, some great events. The pop-ups, the, um, piping contest with, uh, Washington Street, um, just, um, fabulous, fabulous programs that are happening. Um, and then, uh, looking through the packet, there is, um, statistics up there. You can see the average, um, statistics year over year, and then from July to September as we're building this new fiscal year, um, circulation, visitors, new users, computer sessions. Um, and then I wanted to note on the second to last page, um, where we see the percent of collection checked out, um, over time, that, uh, this is trending in a positive direction as well. So we're seeing more people here with our collections and, um, more, um, um, meeting the needs of those that, um, wanna check out our, um, physical collections, so. Uh, on the last page, you can see our average, uh, checkouts and visitors per hour open. And, uh, they're fairly consistent across the board, but I did wanna note that if we were, um, it's not quite set up, because these are, um, all these reports are, um, mostly automated. And, um, so we don't have the Westernport pop-up stats beating in here yet. But if we did, um, the checkouts per hour open would be twenty-two, which is the second highest across the system, second only to La Velle. And the visits per hour would be twelve, which is the highest in the system. So we're really happy with the, um, turnout and participation at the public libraries. I wanna make sure that we, um, gave that a shout out because they're doing, um, amazing job there. Um, so any questions about, uh, those statistics?
I have a question at all about this statistic.
Sure.
But I don't know if it's possible. Like, I don't wanna put you on a lot of, like, I would love to see the breakdown of the digital collections.
Okay.
But I don't know what you're using, what, I don't know if that's possible for you.
So, um.
Easy. Uh, like, what is included in, when this says, you know, six thousand digital circulations? Is that Tupul and Libby? And does that include the comics?
It does not. So, um, the digital circulation includes Tupul, Libby, and Canopy, which those three have the most additional measurements of a checkout. So it's easiest to, um, kind of digest and compare to the physical collections. Some of the other, um, databases, um, like the comics, there, it gets a little complicated because, um, our regional library essentially pays for, um, almost all of our databases that aren't provided by the state. So some of them, they don't parse out what's Allegheny County, what's Garrett County, what's Washington County. They just gobble it all together. So, um, some things are possible, some things are as, um, easy to, um, parse out.
Are we paying for Tupul, Libby, and Canopy?
No.
You know?
No.
All right, but never mind.
Um, we're lucky to be beneficiaries, um, where Western Maryland Regional Library or the State of Library Consortiums that they pay, um, and our patrons get to use these resources, but we do not, I mean, none of our operating budget actually goes towards paying for those very, very expensive subscriptions. We cannot afford to, um, pay for these ourselves.
We're currently in negotiations with, like, Canopy and a lot of our database vendors, so that's why I was wondering about that. But that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
But, um, as, uh, Lisa and I, cause Lisa had mentioned, um, you might have that question. So I jot it down just in case you didn't bring it up, but I did wanna mention that. And, um, uh, one thing I thought would, might be nice for you all, um, I just completed the public library survey for this year, um, which does include some of those other services, like the database use and, um, you know, we could, think was the traditional ones, like the program attendance and circulation and all that. Um, if I did a kind of twenty-year snapshot of those statistics, um, up till now, might be something I could present in the January meeting. You all would find that.
That'd be interesting.
Got a question about our visitors, um, in September, we're down twenty-seven percent. Is that due to what?
Um, I would say the one less branch, um, mainly, I'd say it's probably down a little bit in general. And then that extra not having, um, the Westernport branch be in there, um, adds to that. And plus the, um, I'm sorry, the reduction in authors as well.
Actually, this, this might be a stupid question, but the visitor is going down, but the program attendance is going up. So that just means there's less people overall, but more people who are here are attending the programs.
Yes.
And also the physical circus up, so the same thing there.
Exactly. Exactly.
And user registrations were really hitting hard, so we don't have as many people to actually register on this. So maybe because the county is sort of static and.
Eventually we'll flatten out, huh? Yeah. If we're successful, huh? Actually, I just ran, um, this is something that, um, I'm working on. Um, we talked with Lisa at our, um, department meeting is, um, looking at the marketing plan that I had created in, um, twenty twenty. So I set it for fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-six. And, um, I just checked our, um, active users have gone up, I believe it was thirty-seven percent in those five years. So I was really happy with that. And active means, um, they've used the library in the last year.
Okay, any other question? Any other question? In terms, we have a motion to approve our marketing and outreach, including statistics, statistics reports. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Branch services, Shay?
All right, so, um, lots of wonderful things going on all around the library, um, some personal projects that I've been working on, um, the Battle of the Books planning. So if you guys have not heard, that is the, um, the, um, system-wide, um, reading competition that we're having in partnership with Ruth Endo, uh, Library in Garrett County, Garrett County Public Schools, Allegheny County Public Schools, and Bishop Walsh are all coming together for a, uh, sort of football-style, um, trivia competition based on books. Um, so we started registration, um, and we're gonna have some interest sessions and information sessions coming up. And then, um, January through March, the teams are gonna be training, and then we're gonna have a final competition in March. Um, we have been working on updating our library volunteer program to have a more, um, encompassing library ambassador program that's going to focus mainly on advocacy and fundraising project ideas. So I did some work on, on the framework for that, including, uh, an updated, uh, volunteer job description, a draft org chart for this organization, um, drafting some bylaws, um, and then thinking of some creative titles for the, um, volunteers, and also some, um, sample projects to get us done with that. Um, we joined the Sustainable Library Initiative through our M L A membership. So that was through, um, free through being a Maryland Library Association member. Um, but it gave our staff access to a wide variety of resources, um, focused on sustainability, like program idea banks, vendor lists, webinars, and policy support. Um, I did my quarterly check-ins for, um, my seven supervisees and their teams for, um, the first quarter of the year. Um, and then I am planning an AI education program for students and families that I am going to co-facilitate, um, with Bradley Diddo at West Side. So he's a level teacher, he's also part in the React Robotics. Um, so we're gonna be putting on a presentation of the La Velle Library in December. Um, you know, what is AI, um, guidelines for families, how they can have those conversations based on, um, the different ages of the children. And then something else that he wanted to do ahead of Christmas was talking about, um, technology settings. So if you get a new Apple Watch, if you get a new phone, what are the settings on there? What can be turned off, what can be turned on? Um, so sort of reviewing that and doing like a, I think he calls it like a. Um so sort of reviewing that and doing like a, I think he calls it like a um AI audit, technology audit of, you know. What you have that's using AI, what you know, you and your family are comfortable with, um so.
What's the name of the, the teacher on?
Oh, Bradley Ditto, he's down at Westside, yeah.
He graduated from Lavelle.
I'm not sure.
He's in his mid-forties.
Probably.
Okay, human resources.
Okay, so last month we talked a lot about long awards and recognition, so we have some movement with it. Uh we started a fund committee, we have nine active members, um we've had the meeting so far. The biggest project so far right now is we're working on a holiday party, kind of in the middle of December, in November, Shavon wins one, but then also. Uh they're talking about doing kind of monthly staff activities at the branches, so Lisa just started a pumpkin decorating competition. Uh we have another staff who's part of the committee, she is working on a costume contest and she was like, can we do this, I said, take the brains, go. So I guess the way I'm trying to, I guess, run it is like, I'm here to assist however you need, but like, these are your ideas. I'll tell you if they're feasible or not, go, take it, let's go. And then we talked about becoming like a turkey thing. I shouldn't have just went there, but a turkey thing.
They do it in schools all the time where you decorate the turkey so they don't get eaten at Thanksgiving. You know.
I, I'm looking at you like.
Cut out and then.
It's a. I wanna eat it.
Cut out and they say, look, store or something, they say decorate your cut-out turkey so it doesn't look like a turkey, so it doesn't get eaten at Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now I get it, I get it now.
We had a lot of good reception to it, every meeting I'm kind of just like, what do you guys want, attempt to do structure, but. Um really good reception to it though, we actually just had one of the staff members send us like a whole list of her ideas and I was like, okay, great. Um so that's getting taken over very, very well. Uh Kudos is completely, I think revamped at this point, we had twenty Kudos sent in for the October all-staff meeting. Um so that's really exciting, I sent you guys the list, I believe, of what their suggestions were, so we're kind of slowly living through that. And they have for the birthday that just got approved, so they're gonna be very excited about that. Moving on, I guess, uh I'm continuously trying to update our systems. Uh same money payroll, getting new policies written, something that we're talking about is kind of deep diving into the handbook. Seeing what's missing, seeing what kind of the other libraries are doing and making sure that it is compliant all the way and written a little bit better. Um and then something that I'm working on right now too is making sure that all of the files are compliant as well. So that's, I'm working on active first. Um and the last thing, big focus of mine is training. Uh we're doing a professionalism workshop, so we're going to define, you know, mission, vision, values for ACLS and we're gonna go through and build pillars of professionalism. Um just kind of a little reminder of why we're here, how building our brand. And then doing a handbook review of what we currently have and then that's gonna open up an opportunity to be like, I mean, what's confusing in the handbook? What can be written more clearly, what do you think should be added, what do you think is kind of ridiculous? Take those suggestions in and then get to work on it. So we're doing a disciplinary action training, which also gonna be kind of a workshop. The way that it's set up is I have a virtual session with our service leaders, we're gonna have, we're gonna record it because one of them can't make it. But it takes you through kind of a very basic scenario, it's like, okay, here's what you would do. Opens up the discussion for all the community, it's like, okay, well, what if this is going, what if, what if this person does this? Okay, let's talk about it, get some opportunity to discuss and kind of plans out those like zero tolerance, but also. Different things to do, how to handle situations. Um and then we have a policy training uh coming up in October on the new policies and that's kind of. Just scheduled out or I guess laid out more of a training type way, so we're kind of pushing for that. Uh and kind of keep working on the issues that have come up, I think we're starting on a. Kind of have to say like canned, but it's like a response to like how you should respond to certain things if you're a study, like when patrons kind of a de-escalation training. So that they have that training and do that and that I'm hoping will be in a workshop way as well. I, I prefer things to be kind of an open discussion and talk while we're also learning. So that's kind of like, I've got a lot going on.
That's great.
But yes, that's what I've got going on, um it's really exciting, things are picking up. I had staff telling me that things are doing great and I'm doing a great job, I said, my gosh, I'm getting a whack now. But it's been a very positive reaction to kind of what we're doing here, it's a team, it's fantastic, so. I'm, I'm seeing some happiness, I'm hearing it.
That's greatness. Jason's not here though. Do we have any IT or facility, facilities, geez, I can't speak, facilities update, save me.
Sadly, many of our HVAC systems are flash and red at this time. Um so I didn't say. I took the grand training this week, or no, that was last week. So there are some possible sources for us to apply for some assistance to get the HVAC system replaced here. At Frostburg and also Washington Street, these are the two that are over twenty years old, I think the one at Washington Street is over, some parts are like over twenty-seven years old. Um we also have the roof upstairs here was described as spongy. Uh the facilities person, which is a little frightening, we've had some leaks in the roof that have come down through and damaged paint and all of that. So they're concerned about the winter, about snow accumulation. Um I don't know why they thought it was good to build a flat roof in Frostburg, but that's what we've got. Um so we have several facilities related things that are very urgent and um expensive. So um one of the topics that I'm meeting with the county about tomorrow, in addition to talking about Western Port, it's just the CIP. What, what are the other library-related projects that we can maybe uh get in the mix? So that we can tackle some of these things and get them updated, but Jason, um he had, he dealt with like four different HVAC, different matters at Washington Street in the mon, in the last month. Um and on top of that, he's doing all of his IT uh work, he's mentioned about um weekends at two o'clock, the DNS stops working. If he doesn't fix it, the internet's not gonna work in any of the branches, so I met with, I had his department meeting last week, so there's. Just a lot to unpack there as far as um the way that we are organized and set up in the library system and where we might need to put additional resources. Um so there's, there's again, you know, I'm gonna pile up this, that there's lots for us to talk about with facilities.
Are you able to connect it all with them, we've got an advertisement at the top of the emails every week, were you able to connect with them about some of these? Issues? Think I've known the number, they just. But they offer through the state, they have these programs that.
Is it the Royal Group?
No.
Okay.
It is.
The Royal.
I have connected.
Check with them, uh the emails went out last Thursday, it'll come out again this Thursday and it's right at the top of it. Check into that, I don't know for sure, but um. It might be something worth considering.
Oh, look, so the group last week's training was through the Maryland Department of the Environment. And apparently they have sixty-four million dollars that they're going to be able to award to the different counties in the state to do um. Electrification, um exploring into solar, um LED lighting, which I mean, a lot of the light fixtures in the library wanna take advantage of some of these opportunities to get our light fixtures updated to make them LED. So um just uh you know, looking to compile the list of what our needs are and have those conversations with the public works at the county. Explore that side, but I will definitely look at the empower.
Also, um there might be some dollars available through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um and then we have a member of the Chamber, Energy Select, that does solar. And there's a program, I'm gonna have to dig back through some business cards and I'll email you the program. Um Amy at the Food Bank used their program um to do solar. So let me dig through, but I'm only gonna.
I appreciate it. I do not believe there was any public comment.
I'll make one, you know, you're impressive. I am so grateful to see this board. Women are impressive and we're powerful and we get shit done and jacked. I'm looking at the board, I'm like. That's someone that we deserve it, all, we're powerful, we get things done and I am beyond happy to see all of you here.
We do have Bill too, people man.
Which is fine.
Our church board is exactly the same way, I would say we're three-quarters women at this point.
Yeah. You know. I said, I was an old woman office right, and now Stephen. My women are running out. And I'm like, look, we're gonna have to hire another CBA woman, that's all there is to it, because men, if I come in and I go right by, and I say, I lost my husband. I don't know what to do, I'm sorry. What are they gonna do? I wrap them up with a hug and hold them until they don't have to cry anymore, but you know, we need women, that's good for all of you and Jack.
Do we have anyone live?
Um not yet, I asked them to type their manager and speak up, but that's something like.
One question, do the branches ever take a party trick-or-treat with the kids, like when the kids get out, they even give out candies or anything?
We do, um so each branch received two huge bags of candy at the beginning of the month and we have that at the circulation desk. Some of the branches have um groups of children who are dressed up who come through. Um and then sometimes we've done programs um where, you know, there's been a trunk or treat type thing in Western Port. And Shaggy probably speak better to this than me, smart, what's going on this year?
Yeah, um this year we have um the candy in the branches. I do not believe we're participating in any other outreach this year, but just based on the other outreach schedule that we're going to. Um the FSU's done best, that is the first weekend of November, so um and then. Yes.
And during uh story times, the week of.
Oh.
Whether you're costing.
Yes, and we're, we're having a special evening story time um here at the Frostburg Library. That week, so that will be at five PM and that's um, you know, a little bit outside of our normal hours to give um, you know, working parents or families with different schedule opportunity to come and. Yes, um dress up for that, we're all that week for a story time.
I think the, my question was really in a different direction, like ringing the trick-or-treat goes around, like ours in town is on the thirtieth. It's five-thirty to seven-thirty, I don't know if someone will be at the branch to give it out or not. And then like at eight o'clock, you have a meeting in the park, as long as it's not, it's a cold rain, but that was the evening, or we have ours, we never have ours on Friday or Saturday night because a lot of times. People like to stop and have that drink on the way home on the weekend and we never have, ever had it on the weekends, we have it on. During the weekend, the trick-or-treat, or Halloween's the thirty-first, we can't get back to Thursday night instead of Thursday first.
Um I'll have to double-check the schedule, GC should be open on the Thursday night, right?
I think we're there till five. These nights are late night.
Oh, okay.
To get them to sign out there and they know where it's coming from, mostly the patrons, the person's way on to the sidewalks and they just walk up and down. I don't know if it's something they wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, I can double-check the schedule, but we would have to, you know, have them work in different hours. Um and then if we were gonna have the branch open, then we would also need at least two staff to do that. Um and then, you know, approval from Lisa and updating in the calendar and all that, um so. Right now, we don't have anything scheduled, but I could, I could definitely take a look.
Just so you know, I'm sure we do ours on the street and some other places. If you need someone, if you had to sign this out, the Georgia Street Library, we could probably get someone to hand the candy out, it wouldn't cost anything, run a damn extra salaries or anything. I just think it would be good for the communities now that we've really taken a bigger part in our community and that's, it's like it's a big success.
So all the businesses just have sort of like a person out right, each business, like the kids go down the street.
So the library wouldn't have to necessarily be open.
Right, it wouldn't have to be open, I know with us, if we have the stores, it just disrupts the stores, we're starting regular business, so we have like someone out on the street. And like Town Hall does the same thing and, but it gets easier that way and a lot of kids don't go on the side streets anymore like they used to, they stay based on main street. So you let me know.
Like if you're doing it on Thursday, a lot of them are doing it on Friday, everyone from the other community is gonna be at Tony on Thursday.
We do ours on Thursday because there's no school on Friday and there's that meeting in the park and we can do it in armor if we have to, that way they don't have to get up early and it will be good.
Yeah, we have a trick or trunk, but I, I don't have the date.
Yeah.
Right off, but it, it's. Thing comes out here, I just not sure we don't have.
What's the time of it again?
It's five-thirty to seven-thirty and then as I said, we even advertised a free movie at eight o'clock in the park.
We'll take a look.
Pardon me?
What's the movie?
I don't know, that's not my job, that's another job. It won't be real scary, I promise.
Anything else? Any closing remarks? Anything else for me? Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'm in motion.
Upcoming meetings, November eighteenth.